Good evening. Our custom is to present the invocation, a pledge of allegiance to our country's class, class, cla- flag. Prior to, yeah, I know, losing the tie. Prior to beginning and calling a meeting and order. Rabbi Cheriton from Kaabad Jewish Center on Charlotte Road in Kennesaw. I was fortunate enough to be at your, your grand opening. Great event, and we're glad you're here to present our invocation. Pardon me? About a year ago, wasn't it?
About three years ago.
And that'll be followed by the pledge. Officer Ott will lead with the assistance of Wesby Slade, who is in Boy Scout Troop 772 out of John Knox Presbyterian at Johnston Ferry. For those who wish to do so, please rise for the invocation and pledge.
God in heaven, master of the universe, we stand here before you in prayer. Look favorably upon the honorable members of this governing body of Cobb County. Bless these distinguished individuals who have been chosen to enact laws and decisions for all the citizens of our county. Let us recognize that this privileged position allows us to perform one of the seven Noah Hyde laws given to us by God at the dawn of civilization. At mankind's beginning, and again at Mount Sinai, you issued forth seven universal commandments for all of humanity to heed, which came to be known as the seven Noah Hyde laws. The last of these precepts is that every society legislate for itself a system of law, order, and social justice based on the recognition and acknowledgement of you, almighty God, as the sovereign ruler of all men and of all nations. We, the citizens of this blessed country, the United States of America, proudly proclaim this recognition and affirm our commitment to justice in our pledge of allegiance when we describe our union as one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. Almighty God, grant those assembled here the ability to conduct their deliberations accordingly and to enact laws while being aware of your presence. Allow them to debate their differences vigorously, but to remember foremost that to legislate for the common good of the people is not only a civic privilege, but also a divinely mandated responsibility. On Thursday, the people of this great country will celebrate Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving is a day to thank God for all the things that make this country great, including our liberty and freedoms, and for all the things that God does for us as individuals. There's no doubt that this great country's historically unprecedented success and prosperity is due to the fact that its founding fathers recognized that there is a supreme being who provides and cares for every creature. They understood that since God sustains and gives life to every being, it follows that every being has certain unalienable rights upon which no government can impinge. These strong morals upon which our republic was founded express themselves to this day in American life. Looking at the dollar bill and seeing in God we trust is a reassurance that as a people we still recognize and acknowledge the source of all of our achievements. Almighty God, grant those assembled here wisdom and understanding and a spirit of counsel. Wisdom to turn adversity into opportunity, to transform the challenges of today into the seeds from which we'll sprout the successes of tomorrow. Understanding to properly direct the resources of government according to the needs of all citizens. And counsel to unite us all in working for a better Cobb County. May he who makes peace in his heavens make peace for all of us and for all of mankind, and let us all say, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rabbi. Thank you, Officer Ott and Boy Scout Slade. Thank you for helping us this morning, this evening. I'd like to call this meeting officially to order. Before we begin with our regular agenda, Commissioner Cupid has a special guest that she would like to recognize.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're honored to have a couple of people here with us who were recognized by our Metro Atlanta Boys and Girls Club. I would like to formally invite them in December so we can properly recognize them, but since you've taken your time to come here tonight, I'm going to ask if Ms. Lyric Carter can at least stand and be recognized as one of the finalists of our Metro Atlanta Boys and Girls Club. Out of hundreds, maybe more students, she had to compete to be one of the, one of the select members or finalists of the Boys and Girls Club, and I think she was chosen out of like fifteen youth that are around the Metro Atlanta area. And she had a very powerful statement, and I'm going to provide her opportunity to perhaps share that with us when you come back in December. So, thank you for coming here tonight, and thank you, Mom, for bringing your daughter tonight.
Thank you for being with us. Appreciate it. It'll take us to tab three. First agenda item, presentation, Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could I ask the Cemetery Preservation Board members and volunteers to come up for some special recognition for all you do? Most of you probably know this lady right here, Helga Hung, who, how long have you been on the Cemetery Preservation Board? Helga is our cemetery guru. When we have zonings, when we have anything in the county, we go to Helga. And I believe you have one other board member here tonight? Monk? Mark? Mark is with us. And then we also have, we're recognizing some volunteers who are not on the Cemetery Preservation Commission, but have volunteered their time to preserve specific cemeteries throughout the county. And I know Roberta, and I know Michael, and I guess there are a few that couldn't make it. And I'll just read their names in the cemetery that they sponsored. Ashley Barlow with Mount Mula Cemetery on Shalaford Road. And will you get that certificate to her? David Beam, Kennesaw Mountain Camp Three, Sons of Union Veterans of the Civil War. And I know Michael is representing him tonight as well, as is I'm Roberta Cook, the Riverline Historic Area. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners recognizes you for adopting Hooper McWilliams Cemetery, South Cobb Drive. Thank you for preserving and protecting our heritage for future generations. This is the twenty-second day of November, two thousand and sixteen. Greg Leggy with Brown Number One Cemetery on Old Canton Road. Thank you for your service. And Michael's here. Michael Reither, Sons of the Confederate Veterans. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners recognize you for adopting Blackwell Cemetery at East Piedmont Road and Garrett Old Holly Springs Cemetery on Highway ninety-two. Thank you for preserving and protecting our heritage for future generations. Great job. We appreciate all you do. No, that one's for Greg. So, let's give these folks a big round of applause. And do y'all want to tell us anything about the number of hours you spent, or how long you've been doing this, and how you got to adopt this specific cemetery?
Okay, I'm Roberta Cook, and I am president and executive director of the Riverline Historic Area Nonprofit. The area that we cover is about six miles west of the Chattahoochee River from Vining's to Smyrna to Mabelton, and there are four abandoned cemeteries in our historic area. We adopted two of them. We just had a five, fifth-year anniversary for two of them. And we go out every month to do maintenance and take care of the cemeteries. And tonight, we're being recognized for adopting another one in our historic area. And I really have to commend, the reason why we're doing it is because of Mark Seerfroth right here, because he's not only on the Cobb County Historic, Cobb County Cemetery Preservation Commission, which is appointed by our commissioners, by the way, and he has also joined the Riverline Historic Area as a board member. So, he's wearing two hats here, and I have to thank Mark for this, for adopting a third cemetery. We couldn't have done it without him being on the board and actually taking over our cemetery program. So, I just want to commend Mark for that. And also for Helga, because like she said, she's lost the count of years that she's been with the cemetery commission, and she looks very meek and mild, but if you mess with the cemeteries, you just don't want to be in her path. So, we all know she, she has a pretty, she's a tough cookie. And she's not speaking. She said, and she also wants to tell you all that we need more volunteers. So, I'm passing that on from Helga. Anybody else want to speak here?
First of all, I'd just like to thank all those individuals and groups that have adopted cemeteries in Cobb County. This is, the Cobb County Cemetery Adopt a Cemetery Program is an important program for preserving the story of the citizens of Cobb County. We're a pretty old county here in Georgia, and we have a lot of old family cemeteries and church cemeteries that still need preserving so that we can keep that history for our children and our grandchildren, future generations. And so, I'd like to say thanks to all of those who have already been a part of this wonderful program.
Hello, I'm Michael Reither. I volunteered my time, and I want to thank Helga for my, being my main contact. My, I worked, excuse me, I belong to the Sons of Union Veterans and also Sons of Confederate Veterans, and we adopted the cemeteries because of the Civil War soldiers buried there and other soldiers from various other conflicts buried in these cemeteries, and we want to respect and maintain these military burial sites. Thank you.
This is for the board members. You didn't get a certificate, you got a flower. That's really welcome. Thank you. Thank you for all you do, and you're gonna get a flower.
Next tab is tab four, SunTrust Park Update. It's the county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Cook, I don't know, and Ms. Hung may not know, but when I was Community Development Director, I know she's been involved with cemetery preservation for over thirty-two years, so. And also, I can reflect back, when I was appointed county manager, we were doing reserves, and I think it was about seventeen hundred dollars that had not been spent. And I moved those monies, and I remember that day because Ms. Hung had some unkind words for me for moving those cemetery preservation monies, so I had to go to the board to put those monies back. But given an update on our construction update, so far, four hundred and twenty-four million, two hundred and fifty-seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars been completed, and the ballpark is eighty-seven percent. I'm gonna go through some of the same type presentation, Mr. Chair, but at the end, in the future, we're gonna try to add more to our presentation and go beyond the stadium. We've been sticking to the stadium because that was the directive early on that the board had asked me to do. We're averaging about a thousand and fifty-one workers, four hundred and six workers on ballpark site during the weekends, and a hundred and forty-five workers on the mixed use. This is an area view looking northeast on, towards the Omni Hotel in the lower-left corner. This is an area view looking southwest, and you notice a lot of landscaping and other things that's being placed in there along Windy Ridge. This is sand base being placed over the stone playing field subbase, so that's coming together. Centerfield seats. His photo was taken November the fifteenth, so you can see how it's really taking shape. It's the dugout seats. They cover it with the rhino plastic, the seal coating, the same product used as in a line in a truck bed. This is the kids' play area, zip line and climbing wall, this part of that as well. Braves Clubhouse is almost complete. We're readying the offices to be ready for them for occupancy with COs and everything else by twelve-nine. They'll be moving into the administrative offices as well. This is the Delta Club pit outgoing. It's ongoing. The lower-level suite, ceiling and decorative beams and other things are going into that area with a view towards the field. These are the bridge supports going over two-eighty-five. There, you can see that's readying for the pedestrian bridge. This is the walkway over Windy Ridge Parkway is under construction as well, so that they'll get all the vents up and then they'll start setting the beams. These are some parking lots under construction along Circuit Seventy-five north of the stadium there. Public safety continues to work with the Braves staff to ensure safe environment. The nine-one-one dispatch approved for the stadium by the board on the last agenda item. And then there's a traffic and pedestrian plan drafting in the park. An area for public safety has been cleared, and it's pretty well ready for use. This time, we're gonna play a video. This is a drone flying over SunTrust Park. At this time, I'll ask the board to write me. I won't have one at the last meeting in December, which is the twenty-second. We'll come back in January.
Perfect. Any questions, economists, from Mr. Hankerson? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next tab is tab five. This is our transportation agency. There's one item. Mr. Wilgus, Director Wilgus.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. This item is to approve a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Dunn Avenue located in Land Lot Two-eighty-three of the Seventeenth District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia. Dunn Avenue located in Commission District Four is classified as a local street. Eastbrook Development LLC, Eastbrook, has purchased all of the property adjacent to this portion of Dunn Avenue. We request the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Dunn Avenue located in Land Lot Two-eighty-three of the Seventeenth District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia, and having determined that said right-of-way serves no substantial public purposes, authorize the disposition of the same by quick claim deed to the adjoining owner, Eastbrook Development LLC.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public hearing for this agenda item, this item only. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Please come forward at this time. Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director. Tab six, public comment. Counselor.
First speaker is Lance LaRusso, if you'd come forward.
Good evening. I'm Lance LaRusso. I'm the general counsel for the Georgia Attorney and Order of Police and the attorney for Cobb FOP Lodge Thirteen. Martin Luther said, "A faithful and good servant is a real godsend, but is truly a rare bird in the land." Law enforcement recruiting numbers are down ninety percent in the United States. We had four law enforcement officers ambushed, three of them killed over the weekend. That is interfering with our recruiting efforts. And I'm here to speak today about a policy that stands in the way of three Cobb County principles. Number one is to hire and retain the best and the brightest. Number two is to be fiscally responsible with taxpayer funds, and number three is keep Cobb County safe. The nepotism policy currently in place is standing in the way of these goals. If an employee is related to another employee, they may not be able to seek employment within the same department. If they become related by marriage, they may have to leave the department or the county. The policy is inconsistently enforced, creating potential liability and unenforceable, at least, to effectuate the goals. The goals of the policy are antiquated and contrary to good government. Just as an example, the county is currently spending three hundred thousand dollars on a pay study to attract, attract and retain the best and the brightest, and this policy is throwing away the best and the brightest. The county is big enough to ensure that there's no direct supervision, no direct evaluation, and no direct discipline of related individuals. That essentially is what the policy is designed to prevent happening. Departments in three surrounding counties have abandoned this type of antiquated policy. The Marietta Police Department has a hundred and sixty-two officers. They do not prevent married officers from working in the department. The same is true of the Gwinnett County Police Department with six hundred and sixty-nine sworn officers. The same is true of the City of Holly Springs, and they have twenty-eight sworn officers. The same is true of the Cherokee County Sheriff's Office with three hundred and sixty-four sworn officers. I could go on. Just a very brief survey that I did proves that Cobb County is standing alone with this policy, and it's interfering with hiring, recruiting, and retaining the best and the brightest. If officers are open about their relationships, and we know that they happen to be married, then department heads can make allowances. They can ensure that people are not in this proper chain of custody, they're not in the proper chain of supervision, they're not evaluating each other or dealing with discipline. But if we keep those relationships under wraps, we wind up creating the evil that we're seeking to remedy. We have outstanding candidates that are ready to start with this county and ready to return to this county. I know of three or four officers who've left in the past couple of years because they got married to someone they worked with, and some other police department got the benefit of a hundred thousand, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars worth of training that they walked out the door with, and they want to come back to work here. The concerns of having married couples working together, quite frankly, are fictional and unrealistic, and that's proven every day, not only in this county where people may not have disclosed their relationships, but in the private sector and in other counties, several of which I just mentioned, several small departments, twenty-eight departments, and they don't have a problem with people working in the same department who are married. The current policy also picks and chooses which related individuals can work together. Brothers-in-law, that's okay. Married people, that's not okay. Is that the business of government to be making those judgment calls? The cost of finding and replacing employees is extremely expensive. Some people place, some studies place it as a hundred and twenty percent of the original hire, and we know what it costs to hire people in public safety. Lost productivity can last as long as one to two years, and again, we're losing hundreds of thousands of dollars when those people leave. Some of the individuals who are leaving are prime recruiting picks for other agencies. They are not unemployed long, but they should be employed here. They are the exact people, as a Cobb County resident and a Cobb County business owner, that I want responding to that nine-one-one call. We're asking you to immediately suspend enforcement of this outdated relic of a policy, and I'm asking you to immediately do it. Do it as quickly as possible, because right now, there are two outstanding employees, at least, hanging in the balance. With all of the other stresses these officers have, should they be worried about whether they're gonna have their job tomorrow? Replace it next month with a policy that prevents direct supervision, discipline, and evaluation if the employees are related. The county is big enough to do that. I'm asking you to be true to the principles of Cobb County. Stop throwing away and losing the best and the brightest in the name of an antiquated policy, and put public safety first, as this county has done over and over and over again when given the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Monica Delancey.
My name is Monica Delancey. I'm a resident of historic Six Flags Drive community, now known as Riverside community. I'm here, I'm here today to address and to acknowledge a couple of issues and concerns. The first one, I want to recognize the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. Doug Stone is the chair, and I want to recognize the good work they've been doing with communicating to individuals who do attend their meetings about the process and about the revitalization efforts, efforts that's going on in the community. As you're aware, Six Flags Drive has been changed to Riverside Parkway, and my concern is for the residents who reside on Six Flags Drive. There are over five hundred residents who have not been notified about the change. I've been communicating this to your department, and apparently, notices did go out to the owners of department complexes, but not individual notices to the residents. So, from my conversation with residents, we're concerned about our voter registration cards. Will they be updated, and when we receive those in the mail? We're concerned about our driver licenses. How much time will we have to make sure the correct address is shown on our driver licenses, as well as our mail? So, if we can receive some type of formal communication with a letter or something of that magnitude delivered to the residents, that will help in the process. And like I said, that's five hundred-plus residents with Six Flags Drive addresses. Now, I do want to recognize some good work that's going on in our schools, in the community. Again, I want to congratulate Lyric Carter and her mother, Tara Carter, for being here tonight. Lyric Carter is a junior at Pebblebrook High School, and so, just wanted to recognize that. Also, Pebblebrook High School graduation rates have improved. Currently, they have a graduation rate of seventy-two point four percent. Mr. Travis Joshua is the principal of Pebblebrook High School. In addition, Pebblebrook High School varsity football team went to the playoffs for the first time in nine years, so just wanted to recognize that. And also, Pebble High School marching band. We went to Alabama twice in October, and we won grand championships back-to-back, and then, right, yes, and then two weeks ago, right here in the Atlanta area, we placed second place in a national high stepping marching band contest. My daughter is on the flag line. She serves as the captain. Her name is Breon Perkins, and she's a junior at Pebblebrook High School as well. Linnley Middle School, the principal is Ms. Lisa Moore Williams. They have a partnership with Word of Faith Cathedral Church. Word of Faith Cathedral Church will be sponsoring the school store. They will be purchasing all the items, the pens, pencils, notebook, and they've been working with the students to design how the school store would look, and also, the students would work in the school store. So, I just wanted to recognize that. Riverside Intermediate School, which the principal is Dr. Barbara Sweeney, have launched a hundred mentors campaign, so they're looking for mentors. So, I just wanted to make sure to note that. Some other things that's going in the community, I want to recognize some organizations who have been doing some great work for the Thanksgiving holiday. Hope Outreach Center, last week on November seventh, sixteen, they did a community dinner for the Mabelton, Austell, South Cobb area. The executive director of Hope Outreach Center is Carolyn Turner. Also, I want to recognize Mr. Leslie Walker with the South Cobb Recreation Center along the Boys and Girls Club for doing a Thanksgiving dinner for the community last Friday night, November eighteenth. And then, Leland United Methodist Church is giving out Thanksgiving baskets to the South Cobb community, so I'm going to recognize that. Upcoming events? Upcoming events, we will be hosting a community job fair at the South Cobb Recreation Center on December the twelfth. That's going to kick off Six Flags Drive Neighborhood Week. And that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Kenneth Howell.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kenneth Howell of Georgia Community Coalition. I wanted to bring it to your attention again before this commission on the housing disparity in Cobb County. We continue to see communities go up. These luxury apartments, these two-hundred and three-hundred-thousand-dollar communities, there were over thirty-five-hundred public housing and apartment complexes torn down, and none of them have been replaced with affordable houses or equitable houses. It appears that we are being lower-income and middle-income families are being forced out of Cobb. And it's not fair. We've made our homes here. Our children go to school here. And now there are no affordable living spaces for these people to live in. And it's appalling. And I wanted to bring it to your attention again. The other thing is in transit. I see here on the tab seven, number fifteen and sixteen, especially number sixteen. You are asking for twelve fixed route buses for the ten-X service. We presently have fifty-four express buses between Cobb Link and Greta that sit on that lot over there on South Marietta that work six to seven hours a day. The rest of the time, they're sitting on that lot. And now you're asking for twelve additional buses to run a ten-X service that is nothing more than a recreational run. To sit on that same lot where we are overcrowded already, to sit out there and run is nonproductive. We should not be spending that kind of money on those buses. We are talking anywhere between four hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollars per bus. And it doesn't make sense. The circulars, they're asking for two fixed route buses. The circular service was supposed to be small bus. The tab board ordered six small bus to provide that service. And now you're coming and asking for an additional two fixed route buses to provide circular service. As a bus operator as well, you are not going to run a circular service in a fixed route bus in the Cumberland area once that stadium opens. There's no room. There's no room with the new Route Twenty-Five. And then, five circular buses running out of the Cumberland Transfer Center, we don't have any room up there. The transfer center up there is closed, the kiosks is closed, you can't even sell tickets. So where are we putting the money? It's nonproductive. Thank you. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Ken.
The next speaker is Stephen George. Stephen George.
My name is Stephen Michael George, Jr. I live in an incorporated Cobb County. And thank God we live in a country where the citizens can come up and speak to their representatives. I originally had not planned on speaking this evening, but when Mr. LaRusso brought up the nepotism policy, I felt duty-bound to follow up on that. I agree with everything he's saying. I would also point out that whenever people in public service make a decision, I would suggest that it's always a good idea to use the three-prong model for ethical decision-making. Is that decision or action fair? Sounds like maybe this nepotism policy may or may not be fair, probably not. Is it balanced? Doesn't sound balanced to me. Is it legal? I'm not an attorney. Maybe it is, maybe not. But if all three of these questions aren't yes, it is an unethical decision or policy. And with that, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Texas Tab Seven, our consent agenda. Commissioners, I'd like to bring forward a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second? Any comments? Yes, ma'am.
During the public comment, there are some statements that were made that addressed the transit agenda items. It may not be appropriate to discuss it here, but I'd like to ask a question of our director with respect to a couple of points that were shared.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Director. During public comment, there are some statements made about the buses being able to maneuver in the Cumberland area and whether or not there'd be space to accommodate them. Can you address that?
The vehicles will have no problem operating there, ma'am.
Okay. So there was comments about the transfer station and whether or not there'd be adequate space to accommodate.
There should be those, but the buses for the circulator won't be at the transfer center for very long at any one point in time.
Okay. So there should be adequate room for it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's all the question I have for them.
Thank you.
And also, in discussion with staff, I wanted to pull agenda item number twenty-three for a discussion.
Twenty-three?
Yeah. I'm sorry, not twenty-three. Number twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay. So what we're going to do is we're going to restate the motion, which still applies to approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize the execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county person with item number twenty-nine to be taken independently. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. So let's address number twenty-nine before we go on. Mr. County Manager.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Agenda item twenty-nine is to authorize the appropriation of general fund fund balance in an amount sufficient to pay the remaining balance due to Hery International for their work as project manager, owner representative of services for Cobb County in relation to the design and construction of Sun Trust Park. Just a little background, on September ninth of two thousand and fourteen, the Board of Commissioners approved an agreement between Cobb County and Hery International for project management, ownership representative services related to the design and construction of the joint Cobb County-Lanah Braves Coliseum Project. This agreement stipulates that Hery International, Inc. will be paid an amount not to exceed one point five million dollars for their services. To date, a total of one million, sixty-three thousand, sixty-seven dollars has been paid to Hery International, leaving a maximum of four hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars to be paid. The funding statement on September ninth, two thousand and fourteen, agenda item states that all payments would be provided by bond proceeds, which is the three hundred and sixty-eight million. All payments thus far have been paid through the trust from the bond proceeds construction account. The bond proceeds construction account is now exhausted. Therefore, in order to be compliant with the agreement, the county will appropriate funds within the general fund in order to pay any outstanding and future invoices related to the services run by Hery International in relation to the design and construction of Sun Trust Park.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I can give a little history. I think Bill gave some there with the three hundred and sixty-eight million. Also, as a part of the contract, there was a project budget of six hundred thousand dollars to be paid by both parties. Also, when we went out for an RFP, and that was before, we went out for an RFP to solicit construction management services to oversee all the accounting, the billing, and everything else as it's submitted through AB up to the county. So invoices come through the county to be paid out of that trust fund. So it came back at one point five million. We signed the contract with Hery in September fourteen for thirty-one months, thirty-one months at one point five million, which would get us through April. This was done in September fourteen. This would get us through April at the time that that contract was closed. There may be some other things beyond that. I don't know if we have all the invoices and all of that. Well, the agenda item that Mr. Vogtman pointed out said that it would all come from those bond proceeds. The Attorney's Office and the Finance and our water system, who worked with me on the accounting, raised some question about retainage for Hery for the balance of that contract. That was done in September of sixteen. The bond proceeds were paid out in final in September of sixteen, but we began those questions. The question begged to be answered, why didn't we hold the rest of that money? We attempted to, and a question they raised as to whether we could hold those monies out of that trust fund, because whether the contract would allow those to be held. After review, there were questions as to whether we could hold the balance of those monies in that trust because they had to be released for construction. We came to the conclusion that we couldn't hold those monies. That's what put us in there. There's no difference in accounting, except we were challenged as to whether we could hold those monies out of the trust fund. And that's why we are here for you today to allow us to do that. That's a little history is a question that begged to be answered.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
Is there the potential to reimburse those once the bonds, if we see that there's, you know, reduction in the bond payment, or is there a way to replace that money back into the general fund balance?
There's nothing to prohibit us to try to sit down with the Braves and renegotiate to try to get that out of that total project budget. We just couldn't. The decision was made, but there's some question that we can still try to sit down with the Braves and negotiate and replenish those monies to pay Hery.
I appreciate you providing that background because it did help to provide why we are going into general fund for this expense. And know that from talking to both you and Bill, that it's important for us to maintain Hery as a project manager because of the significant amount of work that's entailed in the construction of the stadium between now and April. So while it is difficult to see it not come out the bond proceeds, it is of no advantage to us to not move forward with funding them and lose their continuing support for the rest of the project.
We talked about that, Commissioner. We need Hery. Once we put those and we mix those public funds with the Braves' fund, they become one. And I think we need to close out the document so there's accountable, auditable, and all that, as you stated. And it's even more important that we retain Hery on with us.
And that would be, you know, my hope is that there is no other outstanding expense associated with the project that we would see coming out of our coffers, that this is the only outstanding, you know, cost. And, you know, if there are other things that are issues, that they be communicated to us as soon as possible so that we don't see something like this in the future.
Okay. So with that, Commissioners, I'll bring forward a motion that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriation of general fund fund balance to pay the remaining balance due to Hery International, Inc. for the work at the general contractor for Cobb County for the construction of Sun Trust Park up to a maximum of four hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars on and as needed basis, and authorize necessary budget transitions, and further authorize the chairman to execute those necessary documents. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there multiple seconds? Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you, gentlemen. The Texas Tab Eight, Cobb County Transportation Agency, there were this nine items.
Good evening again, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. Yes, we have nine items tonight. Number one is to approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC for pedestrian and bicycle improvements of Floyd Road Trail Phase Two, State PI number zero zero one oh seven two seven, Cobb County Project Number D eleven J zero, CCD contract number zero 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 eight nine four. Floyd Road Trail Phase Two is an approved project in the multi-use trails component of the two thousand and five Sphloss Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid from CMEC LLC was reviewed and found to be reasonable but not responsive as the contractor did not meet GDOT's pre-qualification status or DVE goal for this project. Therefore, the next lowest bid of six hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents from Glosson Enterprises LLC was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. Bid tabulation consists of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents for roadway costs and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and water system costs. The scheduled completion date for this project is two hundred and seventy consecutive calendar days from issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed six hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents for pedestrian and bicycle improvements on Floyd Road Trail Phase Two, State PI number zero zero one oh seven two seven, Cobb County Project Number D eleven J zero, CCD contract number zero 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 eight nine four. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Second, any other comments? Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. Commissioner Burrow choked to whisper funny to me right before I was ready to say something. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Item two, please.
Item two is to approve a construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for Bob Cowan Trunk Trail Phase Two, Segment A, State PI number zero zero one oh zero 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 nine, Cobb County Project Number D eleven L zero, Cumberland Community Improvement Project District Project Number CCD dash one oh three three, CCDOT contract number zero 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 nine seven seven. Bob Cowan Trunk Trail Phase Two, Segment A, is an approved project in the Atlanta Regional Commission Plan, twenty forty Regional Transportation Plan, and is designated as State PI number zero zero one zero 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 nine and ARC Project Number CO dash four four six. The department is in receipt of a construction agreement from GDOT for Bob Cowan Trunk Trail Phase Two, Segment A. Under the terms of agreement, the state will fund eligible construction costs up to a maximum amount of four million, five hundred and eight thousand, four hundred dollars. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for Bob Cowan Trunk Trail Phase Two, Segment A, State PI number zero zero one zero 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 nine, Cobb County Project Number D eleven L zero, Cumberland Community Improvement District Project Number CCD dash one oh three three, CCDOT contract number zero 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 nine seven seven. Authorize payment of a construction administration fee in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow? Motion to approve. Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Item three, please.
Item three is to approve a construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for thoroughfare improvements on Interstate North Parkway and Interstate North Circle, State PI number zero zero one three nine six six, Cobb County Project Number E forty-one ninety, CCDOT contract number zero zero one zero two four. The Interstate North Parkway and Interstate North Circle project consists of a realignment of intersection to change the through movement on Interstate North Parkway to Interstate North Circle. The department is in receipt of a construction agreement from the Georgia Department of Transportation for transportation safety and operational improvements of Interstate North Parkway at Interstate North Circle. Under the terms of the agreement, the state will fund eligible construction costs up to a maximum of eight million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-five cents. The county will be responsible for funding a hundred percent of any costs exceeding the state's maximum. Based on the bids received, the county's cost is estimated to be two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-two. Based on the bids received, the county's cost is estimated to be $266,332.50. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for thoroughfare improvements on Interstate North Parkway at Interstate North Circle, State PI Number 0013966, Cobb County Project Number E4190, CCDOT Contract Number 001024, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Hart? Motion to approve. Call a question? Motion carries five zero. Next, item.
Item four is to approve a contract with CMES Inc. for thoroughfare improvements on Interstate North Parkway at Interstate North Circle. State PI Number 0013966, Cobb County Project Number E4190, CCDOT Contract Number 001024. Interstate North at Interstate North Circle is an approved project in the thoroughfare improvements component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $8,599,774.95 from CMES Inc. was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. Bid tabulation consisted of $8,333,442.45 for roadway costs and $266,332.50 in water system costs. The scheduled completion date for this project is 600 consecutive calendar days from the issuance of notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with CMES Inc. in an amount not to exceed $8,599,774.95 for thoroughfare improvements on Interstate North Parkway at Interstate North Circle, State PI Number 0013966, Cobb County Project Number E4190, CCDOT Contract Number 001024. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Hart? Motion to approve. Call a question? Motion carries five zero. Item five.
Item five is to approve a construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for roadway improvements on Cumberland Boulevard, State PI Number 0014012, Cobb County Project Number X2604, CCDOT Contract Number 001033. Cumberland Boulevard is approved roadway improvements, is approved project in the roadway improvements component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The department is in receipt of a construction agreement from the Georgia Department of Transportation for construction of Cumberland Boulevard roadway improvements. Under the terms of the agreement, the state will fund eligible construction costs up to a maximum of $2,150,000. The county will be responsive, responsible for funding 100% of any costs exceeding the state's maximum. Based on the bids received, the county's cost is estimated to be $6,683,578.93. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for roadway improvements on Cumberland Boulevard, State PI Number 0014012, Cobb County Project Number X2604, CCDOT Contract Number 001033, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Hart? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, before I make the motion, I just want to comment on the fact that this project is going to have an impact on a huge number of people. The folks in bindings, it's going to provide the bindings bypass that everyone's been looking for so that people don't have to go through the center of bindings. Also, Cumberland Mall, it's going to solve the problem with the traffic light where it only fires on one direction at a time. So it's really going to have a big improvement. Motion to approve.
Call a question? Motion carries five zero. Item six, please.
Item six is to approve a contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. for roadway improvements on Cumberland Boulevard, State PI Number 0014012, Cobb County Project Number X2604, CCDOT Contract Number 001033. Cumberland Boulevard is an approved road, approved project in the roadway improvements component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $8,883,578.93 from CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. Bid tabulation consisted of $8,634,623.48 for roadway costs and $198,955.45 in water system costs. The scheduled completion date for this project is 600 consecutive calendar days from the notice, issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $8,833,578.93 for roadway improvements on Cumberland Boulevard, State PI Number 0014012, Cobb County Project Number X2604, CCDOT Contract Number 001033. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Hart? Motion to approve.
Second.
Call a question? Motion carries five zero. Item seven.
This item is to approve change order number one final to the resurfacing contract 2015-1 Countywide Major Thoroughfares Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. for resurfacing of county mainstained streets, Project Number E9150, CCDOT Contract Number 000704. Resurfacing is an approved component in the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete and change order number one final to the contract with CW Matthews Contracting, Inc., Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $565,708.74 is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the resurfacing contract 2015-1 Countywide Major Thoroughfares Local Maintenance Improvement Grant with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $565,708.74 for the resurfacing of county maintained streets, Project Number E9150, CCDOT Contract Number 000704, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. I'll bring this forward in the form of a motion as a second. Call a question? Motion carries five zero. Item eight, please.
Item eight is to approve change order number one final to the contract with Carlson Construction Services for installation of 30 closed-circuit television cameras and 30 Ethernet field switches for incident management ATMS Phase Eight, Project Number E5020, CCDOT Contract Number 000886. Incident Management is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signal timing, and planning component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Installation is complete and change order number one to the final, final to the contract with Carlson Construction Services, a saving to the project in the amount of $28,700, is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Carlson Construction Services, a savings to the project in the amount of $28,700 for installation of 30 closed-circuit television cameras and 30 Ethernet field switches for incident management ATMS Phase Eight, Project Number E5020, CCDOT Contract Number 0008886, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
I'll bring this forward as a motion. Is there a second? Call a question? Motion carries five zero. Item nine, please.
Our final item is to approve the reclassification of one full-time General Crew Chief position grade 49 to one full-time General Concrete Supervisor position grade 53. Sidewalks, drainage system improvements, and bridge rehabilitation replacement coverets are approved components in both the 2011 and 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Programs. The department recommends the current General Crew Chief position be reclassified to a General Concrete Supervisor position to appropriately reflect the increased work, task, responsibility now required. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize a reclassification of one full-time General Crew Chief position grade 49 to one full-time General Concrete Supervisor position grade 53 effective December 5th, 2016. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the necessary budget transactions for future year county sidewalk, drainage, bridge expenses, and corresponding reimbursement to the general fund from the 2011 and 2016 SPOS tip funds.
Bring this forward as a motion. Is there a second? Any questions? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Tab nine, Public Safety, is one item. I believe Destiny Davidson will be your presenter.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. One item, which is to adopt an amended resolution that increases the monthly E911 surcharge from the current $1.25 to $1.50 effective April 1st, 2017. OCGA 46-5-135 authorizes the imposition and collection of an enhanced 911 surcharge up to a maximum of $1.50 per month upon landline and wireless telephone subscribers and upon users of other technology, including VoIP, which access E911 services by other means. Currently, revenues generated from this surcharge account for 100% of the revenue that supports the E911 operations. No increase to the surcharge has occurred to landline subscribers since 1990, and the last increase to the surcharge on wireless service occurred in 2010. The forecast for the E911 emergency fund at the current rate of $1.25 projects a shortfall beginning in 2017 in operating and personal expenditures and insufficient funds to support planned capital purchases necessary for the continued operation of the Emergency Communications Department. We request the Board of Commissioners adopt an amended resolution increasing the monthly E911 surcharge to $1.50 on landline and wireless telephone subscribers and users of other technology that access E911 by other means, including VoIP, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents. The imposition and collection of the $1.50 surcharge will become effective on April 1st, 2017, more than 120 days following the adoption of the amended resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. And I'd like to make a comment. Could you reiterate how many agencies have less than $1.50 in this state?
My research shows that we are currently the only public safety anchoring point in the state of Georgia that are charging $1.25.
Thank you. Motion to approve is presented long overdue.
I'll second. You've got to call in it.
I have one question. Why is this not going into effect until April?
The state law requires 120 days notification to the telephone service providers so they have time to adjust their billing.
Okay. Thank you.
Call a question? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just real quick, I think Commissioner Weatherford's comments are important, but I think what's more important is what Destiny said about the fact that this fund will be underfunded before 2017 is finished. So although we may be the only county that doesn't charge $1.50, I think it's important for the citizens that we fully fund it, and so I think this is important to do.
Thank you. Now we'll call a question, and it'll pass five zero. Thank you, Destiny.
Thank you.
So that's going to take us to tab 10, our second public comment. We have none. Take us to tab 11, our appointments. We have one announcement. Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to announce the reappointment of Glenn Melson to the Neighborhood Safety Commission. He's been on there since I appointed him. This will be his second year. He's done a great job, and it's my honor to reappoint him to Neighborhood Safety Commission.
Thank you very much. Tab 12, Commissioners' Public Address. Commissioner Burl. Would you start the clock at the beginning of her comments, please?
Yes, please time me tonight. I'm going to be short and sweet. I'd first like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Spend time with your family and friends and, and thank you. We're grateful that we have, we live in a county where, as the gentleman said before, we're free to speak and give our opinion, and just want to wish you all a very happy and blessed Thanksgiving. I'd also like to congratulate Major Jerry Kwan, our Precinct Four Commander. Last week, he received the East Cobb Citizen of the Year, very well-deserved award, a person that gives of himself 24/7 and always doing above and beyond for others. From now until the 28th of this month, Cobb Senior Services is seeking donations for Christmas 365 to provide homebound clients with gifts and necessities during the holiday season and fulfill specific needs year-round for Cobb County seniors. You can visit cobseniors.org for more information. The deadline to receive donations is this Monday, the 28th. And then also on December 3rd, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., a week from Saturday, make plans to attend the Georgia Room Open House at the Switzer Library. Georgia Room staff will be, will give tours of the room and its local history and genealogy resources, and the Cobb County Genealogy Society will provide a slideshow of Genealogy 101, along with being able, available for consultations in the large meeting room at the Switzer Library. You can go to cobbcat.org for more information. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Commissioner Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got a couple. First one, as we approach Thanksgiving, keep in mind that on Thanksgiving morning, you could come and do the gobble jog and help Mus Ministries raise money for needy families. Last year, they helped 32,000 people, most of them, or two-thirds of them were children. On December 8th and 9th, the Cobb, or the Symphony on the Square will be presenting their Christmas concert at the Jenny T. Anderson. Big news for Cobb County, and this is actually in Commissioner Burl's district, but Wind-Shaped Camps was established in 1985 up at Mount Berry, Georgia, to provide a camp experience that would enable campers to sharpen their character, deepen their Christian faith, and grow in their relationship with others. It was founded by Chick-fil-A founder, Truitt Cathy and his wife Jeanette, who believed that there are limitless possibilities when you invest in the lives of the next generation. Just recently, they announced that they are moving their Wind-Shaped Camps, which is five weeks of day camps in the summer, to Cobb County. Cobb County competed, well, we were considered, along with Chicago and many other cities around the country, and they've decided to move the summer camps to Cobb County, and they will be held at the Mount Bethel Christian Academy North Campus up on Post Oak Trell and Holly Springs, and that's going to start this summer. In talking about the tremendous police officers we have, you heard about Jerry Kwan. I want to thank Officers Pearson and M.S. Smith, both Precinct Three officers, who attempted on November 6th twice. They entered a burning residence in an attempt to rescue the gentleman inside. They were unsuccessful because of the extent of the fire, but they risked their lives twice to go into a burning building, and so I think they're to be commended. Finally, there has been a lot of misstatement in the news, particularly online and also on the television stations, about the Windy Hill Terrible Mill Connector. It is a project, and I'm going to, I'll go through the timeline here a little bit, that has been on the books for over 20 years. It is not a Braves project. It has nothing to do with the Braves. The county is not taking people's homes to build a road connector for the Braves. Back in 1994, it was originally listed as the extension of Leland Drive. It was part of the 1994 SPOS as a Tier Two project. In 2005, it remained on the Tier Two SPOS list. In 2010, it was included in the Powers Ferry Master Plan, and with the construction of the managed lanes by GDOT, the project then got new attention and was moved forward because the first exit on the managed lanes is Terrible Mill Road. And so it is now a part of the 2016 SPOS as a Tier One project. So as you can see, if you look at the history, it is not anything to do with what you've been reading in the newspapers or seeing on TV as being related to the Braves. It's a project that's been in the works for a long time. It's what's needed in the area, and so I just wanted to kind of make sure that the public knows what the real story is.
Yeah, I think for doing that. I think I've gotten several emails over the last couple of weeks. The folks are confused. I would appreciate if you could have your, your team share that with the Cobb Realtors, specifically Roseanne Hall, who is the government relations person.
Okay.
The Cobb Realtors are, it's been brought to their attention, and they're, they have some questions.
Yeah, this is actually from the press release to the county senate.
Fortunately for the us, the Cobb Realtors seek for us to reach out to us to get to the answers before they make the judgment, so I'd appreciate if you could.
Yeah, I'll get it to Roseanne.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I too would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and hope everyone enjoys spending time with their families. I would like to congratulate the Harrison High School Marching Band that, for the second time, has been selected to participate in the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. They're only one of 10 bands nationally that have received this honor, so we're very proud of them. We were going to invite them here in December when they get back, until I found out there's 196 of them. So we're going to probably just bring the trumpet corps in, but they left Monday, and I think it'd be great, so make sure you look for Harrison High School Marching Band on the parade on Thursday. And one note of closing in my area, and you can also look at this on a newsletter that we do weekly, Mac Dobbs Road closed at Stylesborough through 1127 for Cobb County, I'm sorry, Cobb Marietta Water Authority Project. So there are detours that are posted, but watch out for that area, especially during the holidays. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good evening, and like the other commissioners, want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. We have a lot to be thankful for and hope you have an enjoyable time with your friends and family. We typically hold a community zoning meeting on the fourth Thursdays of every month. However, considering that this Thursday is Thanksgiving, that meeting for the Marietta Water Authority Project. the Marietta Smyrna area has been postponed to November 30th and will again be held at the South Cobb Community Center off Alliance Club Drive. A few other announcements. I would like for those who have been active in the district and care about our district to consider applying for a board or authority position. When I first came into office, I held an application process to give people an opportunity to lead on a public level for the county and wanted to open up that opportunity to everyone again. I'm certainly very grateful for those who have avidly served in the District Four positions that are reflected in the county, but to have an open mind that there's a continual source of leadership that is in our county and to be open to diverse opinion across all the communities of the district, I decided to open up all of these positions again. And if you sign up for my newsletter, it's cobbcounty.org/cupid. There'll be an electronic newsletter there, excuse me, electronic link to the application where you can submit online for one of the various board positions. And applications are due, it was originally due by the 12th, but there has been incorrect information that was on the newsletter that I did not see, which states that the applications are due the 20th. Originally, the appointees were going to be selected on the 20th, so what we'll do is we'll push back the application due date to the 20th, and I'll provide the appointees on the 28th, to be fair to those who are working with that, with that December 28th deadline. As always, there are job listings on the newsletter. I hope that you, that you sign up for them and encourage your friends who may not be employed to sign up for them. As it's, with the holidays coming, it is, it is a great time to spend with family, but it provides a significant burden for those who have less resources. And speaking about helping those who may have challenges with resources during the holidays, our Cobb Senior Services staff will have its 11th Annual Christmas 365 event on December 7th, which is an opportunity for seniors to fellowship with one another, and you can actually adopt a senior for this event. And financial donations are being received at cobbseñors.org, and any tangible donations must be received by next week, November 28th. Finally, before I go, if my children are watching, I want to wish Nehemiah a very happy eighth birthday. I will be home very soon, and just can't believe how big you're getting, and look forward to you having a great year.
Thank you. So Thursday is Thanksgiving Day, and it's a day that was set aside by a bunch of folks that were very appreciative of the new country they found and the hosts that welcomed them here. And I know that each of us have our own story, and each of us have our own burdens that we're carrying, and each of us have our own blessings that we might have in our family. My hope is that somewhere, sometime Thursday, you'll remember from your heart that we have a lot to be thankful for and grateful for, including those trials and tribulations. And as I mentioned before, it's only with the trials and tribulations that we truly get to see God's grace in our life, and I certainly hope that we all get to experience that this week. To that end, I hope that each of us have a very safe holidays, and we come back next Sunday. If you're leaving town, or if you're staying in town, that you have just a phenomenal time with your friends and family. Remember, try to think through who in your life or contact list or phone might not be able to have a family or gathering or meal on Thursday, and see if you can't reach out and help them move along. So I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, more importantly, a safe and grateful Thanksgiving.
Commissioner, County Manager?
Chairman, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and spend quality time with friends and family. And also, I'd like to remind you, I will not be in office on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. I will be at my 20th or 22nd year of new commissioners' training. So I will be in Athens for, for two days.
You figure after 22 years, you'd figure out how to do this. So we have a Boy Scout here. Thank you. Sir, please come on forward. You were up here. You come up to the mic. You, you helped earlier with Officer Ott here, who had a hard time. Week after week, we tried to get him to learn those words to the Pledge of Allegiance, so we're grateful you were here today for the help of him on that. Can you tell us a bit about your troop, why you're here, and do you have any questions or comments for us? Remind us who you are.
My name is Wesby Slade. I'm from Troop 772, and we are a high adventure troop, and we do lots of backpacking and camping. Just the other week, we went to Davin's Air Force Base. We went to the museum there. It was a ton of fun. It was a blast. Pun intended. And...
But well appreciated.
Thank you. And we do camping every month, and just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Why are you here tonight?
For the Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge.
Perfect. After watching our proceedings today, do you have a question or a comment or concern?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for being with us. Mr. County Manager, anything for us? All right, we adjourn.